Done.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by Judy, seconded by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Kevin, seconded by Judy. Any discussion?
Before we approve it, I'd like to just comment that we are accepting donations of about $6,200 that have been given to our school district by our wonderful community members and organizations, and we're very grateful for that. We will use them to, certainly in the interest of the donor, but also to further the mission of this school. We're very appreciative and thankful.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have presentations and recognitions. We'll start with MAF. Suzanne.
Madam Chair, Members of the School Board, and Superintendent Duffrin, on behalf of the Motamidi Area Educational Foundation, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak here this evening. I'd like to share a little bit with you about the impact that MAF has had on the school district this year. And I have to put these on so I can read what I wrote. Thanks to the donations from our generous community, MAF has been able to provide more than $80,000 in grants to teachers to use in their classrooms for professional development or for classroom-type grants. Some of these grants include a vernier probe and backyard brain kits for the high school science classrooms, animation stations in the O.H. Anderson Media Center, iPads and Chromebooks at the elementary and middle school levels, and funding for award-winning author Matt De La Peña to speak to Wildwood students. MAF also awarded nearly $50,000 in scholarships to graduating seniors at Scholarship Night last week. Finally, MAF provided more than $26,000 in sponsorships to support three key areas: basic needs for students such as backpacks, school supplies, weekend food programs, and the District Angel Fund Program. We also supported teacher appreciation and recognition. And thirdly, we had supported student enrichment opportunities, such as assisting the high school maps and real-world design teams with funds to travel and compete in national competitions. Next, I'd like to introduce Abby Moffett and Maria Roller, our MAF Legacy co-chairs. They would come up and tell us a little bit about our Fund a Need project.
Thanks Suzanne.
Hi. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm Abby Moffett. I have been on the MAF Board for one year and chaired the Legacy Night Gala for the last two years. And I have three kids in the district. I have Molly in sixth grade, I have Owen in fourth grade, and Liza in first grade. And then Maria chaired the gala with me.
This was my first year co-chairing the gala, and I'll be back next year to do it again. And I have a third-grade daughter, Vivian, and a kindergarten son, Louis.
And we're going to talk about our Fund a Need focus this year. Each year, as part of our Legacy Night planning process, we strive to select an innovative Fund a Need focus which has the ability to impact all students in Motamidi. Our mission is really to support the school district's goals and vision when choosing a Fund a Need focus. We aren't necessarily the leaders, but we are truly here to support what the school needs and what the goals are. This past year, when our Legacy Night Planning Committee collaborated with school district staff, Barb Duffrin and Tony Pierce, through conversations and meetings, it was apparent that there is a very important goal and need for our school district on the horizon: to improve mental wellness for all Motamidi students. It was decided shortly thereafter that MAF's chosen Fund a Need for 2019 would be to support the school's mental wellness initiative, which I'm sure you guys have probably heard. Our Fund a Need focus has been very well received by parents, teachers, our community as a whole. It's something that's really important right now because it has the ability to touch, you know, every student in our district. We'd like to show you the video that we shared at this year's Legacy Night celebration. This video includes the story of Billy Pillowsinski and his mental wellness journey. We are so thankful that Billy and his family have the courage to speak up and share their story with us in hopes that it can help someone else. So with that, here's our video.
I'm scared to go to school. I have to get all A's.
Where do I turn if a student asks me for help?
I feel like nobody will listen to me.
What if I can't find my locker?
My parents are getting divorced.
What can I do?
I feel sad all the time.
I just want to end it all.
I wish my classmates would accept me for who I am.
I worry about making the wrong choices, about college.
How can I manage all this? I'm part of my.
I don't like the impact social media is having on my child.
What are some signs that I should be looking for?
So there's a lot of questions around mental health and how we best meet the needs of our students. If we're really going to address the mental health concerns that are in our district, we really need to address that in three distinct areas. The first area is prevention, the second area is intervention, and the third area is support. So dealing with mental health can be a struggle for both students and their families. One story in particular is a young man named Billy.
It was about sixth, sixth and seventh grade. I was having headaches, and they kept getting worse and went to the doctor.
And when he was checking his sinuses, he hit right here on his head. And I'll never forget the look the doctor gave to me, like, oh my gosh, something's up.
And it ended up being a form of cancer called Langeron cell histiocytosis.
You just couldn't even comprehend that it was your child that this was happening to. After Billy had his last cancer treatment, we were all excited. We had a big party for him, and we celebrated, thinking, okay, we made it through this. Hurrah. And then Billy started acting very odd, not like the good old Billy that we always knew.
Well, when I still was receiving treatment, actually, I would get panic attacks in the middle of the night, and I would end up just pacing the kitchen.
We started getting him in counseling, and we went back and forth with counselors, trying to find a good counselor and trying to find one that understood Billy. And that's when life kind of fell apart for us.
What I didn't realize was I was just burying all the emotions deep inside. My whole family recognized it. They knew that something was off. I would be really irritable. I'd yell at them over little things. I'd freak out, throw them out of the house. Just things that might be written off as normal teenage behavior, but they got worse.
The solutions to Billy's PTSD after he was diagnosed was very difficult. There was not anyone that could handle his acute diagnosis.
We tried going to a few different therapists and counselors, and it was hard just to get into any. In that time that I couldn't find one, everything just got worse.
Billy's last episode of anxiety was so severe, and he was so afraid of the anxiety episode, that he took his anxiety medicine, waited about 10 minutes, it did nothing, so he ended up taking the rest of the bottle. And he just told us, I can't go through this again. My body can't, my mind can't. I can't do it again. And it was, after that, we realized we need to step up the game. We need to get him some really good help, and fast.
That's when I really, really felt like me again. I almost felt like a new person. It was awesome. A whole new relationship with my friends, my family. School went great. I really feel like it developed me into a person.
Mental health is part of life. Billy's happened to come about via his cancer.
Anybody, no matter how good or bad they seem, they could have issues happening, and we need resources to help them out.
As a district, we realize the time to address the mental health needs are now. And with the support of MAF, we hope to do that with a sense of urgency. We would all do as though every one of these were our own children. We really look at this as an opportunity to create a culture that really takes a deep, hard look at the whole child. And in doing so, we really feel that this is what defines a district as an excellent school district.
A donation could really, it could honestly save lives. It really could. And if not, it could shape lives. It could turn these people that are struggling with who they are as a person into human beings that help other people. But they'll never get there if they're always struggling with mental health. They'll never be who they were meant to be.
There are many families in our school district that are dealing with mental health issues right now, and the sooner we can help those people, the better.
So we need your help to fix mental health and build the community around you.
There is something we can do together.
Together.
Together. We need to take mental health seriously.
We can change the culture.
We can erase the stigma.
We can give students and families what they need.
To address their mental well-being.
We, we.
We can train teachers.
To better understand mental health concerns.
And we can remove the barriers.
To accessing mental health support.
But for all of us.
Your support can help fund these programs.
Your support can put Motamidi on a new path forward.
Together.
Together. We can make a difference.
For student mental wellness.
We haven't had the opportunity to see that. It's kind of fun to see. So now, we would like to have all the school board members come up, and Superintendent Duffrin, and we tell the fun part.
As they're coming up, in closing, we would just like to thank our generous community for their donations, which has allowed MAF to contribute a grand total of more than $202,000 this year to help make a difference for students, families, teachers, and staff throughout the Motamidi School District. Thank you.
Next, we have Staff and Student Community Recognizations. Certificate of Excellence designation for 2017-2018 Certified Annual Financial Report. Bill Manazzi. Are you going to do it?
I'm going to take that off.
Okay, thank you.
So we are excited to be able to recognize our district business office on earning the Certificate of Excellence in financial reporting through the Association of School Business Officials. And the purpose of the Certificate of Excellence program is to encourage and recognize excellence and transparency in the preparation and the issuance of the school district's comprehensive annual financial report. Sometimes we refer to that as the CAFR. So Motamidi is one of 23 school districts in Minnesota to earn this designation. And the CAFR was reviewed by a team of experienced school financial professionals who determined that the CAFR that the business office prepared was worthy of this designation in the 2017-2018 school year. This was the first year that the district received the certificate of excellence. And so, I wanted to kick that off, and then turn it over to Bill Manazzi, our Director of Business Services, who is going to call up some other members of the team to receive this award.
So I don't know if I'm supposed to officially hand it to you, but I'm going to. And then I'll get out of your way.
Thank you Superintendent Duffrin. Thank you to the board for taking the time to recognize the business office for this achievement. I'd like to welcome and congratulate my staff who are here tonight. If you could come up, Linda Estes, our Accounting Supervisor, Cindy Herring in Accounts Payable, and Liz Espinip in Payroll. So I had what I thought were some comments that were going to be really applicable to this, and then Barb did such a great job of. So much better from you than from me. So I'll have to kind of go by this here. But preparation to report and other finance and statistical documents require many hours of work, and preparation, review, and deliberation by our business office, and certainly could not have been done without the three individuals that you see here, as well as the others in our business office as well. So thank you so much to them. Additional thanks to MMKR, our CPA firm, and Jim Eikden, who you'll remember, the managing partner at MMKR, for their support and guidance through the reporting process. As Barb mentioned, it is an involved process with a CPA review panel and other guidance, and their guidance was really helpful in achieving this award. And then from our taxpayers, so what does this mean for our community? The report is, and designation furthers our commitment to transparency and quality financial reporting for our community and taxpayers. It's a next-right step in terms of building trust with our community with regard to our financial reporting. So again, thank you very much for taking the time to recognize our group. We do truly strive to support our mission and our vision, even though we're not in the classroom every day, with all the recommendations that you see from us. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Let's have a picture.
Good job, Ellen. That's really cool.
Thank you very much.
Hey Lucy, I have one more comment for this thing.
We were going to stay out to do the last school recognition.
Yeah, I get that.
Oh, we're staying out. Oh, I didn't, I didn't get that.
I just wanted to make the comment about how impactful this is for the Motamidi schools and the business office, that 23, I think I heard 23 districts were awarded this bill. Is that correct? There are 332 school districts in the state of Minnesota. The fact that our group has obtained this is pretty amazing. So thank you for that, Bill and team.
Okay, back to me. So I think if I'm following this correctly, I have the opportunity now to recognize our student board member who is leaving us at the end of this year. Luke, you have been fabulous for us because of those reports that you give us. We love them. I know you took this very seriously, really, when I met with you this summer, you said, I want to do this differently. I want to make sure I'm representing the entire district, not just the high school. You certainly did that, and you did it, of course, with a lot of flair as well. So we've always, we enjoy, we definitely enjoy your updates. We'll miss them next year, but we thank you for your service. And if you don't mind, coming over here so that you can receive our. Okay, and so I also have the privilege to recognize two of our administrators who will be retiring at the end of the year. And so the first one is Associate Principal Luann Wagner from the high school, who has been an educator for over 25 years, and she has served as the Associate Principal of Motamidi High School since 2013. Prior to being with us, she was at St. Francis School District, where she was an Assistant Principal, a counselor, and department chair at the high school. She was also awarded the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals Assistant Principal of the Year Award in 2009. So we will certainly miss you here. We are thankful for your service, your very calm demeanor. I've appreciated that about you, and you have fielded an awful lot of questions for me, from me this year, so I am thankful for your patience as well. So thank you so much for your service, and if you wouldn't mind joining me up here. I also have the opportunity to recognize Principal Kirsten Bowens, who has been an educator for, who is from O.H. Anderson, excuse me. And she's been an educator for 33 years, and has served as the principal of O.H. Anderson since 2008. She came to us from North Branch Public Schools, where she served as the Assistant Principal, Staff Development Coordinator, and a classroom and K-12 gifted and talented teacher at the middle school. And I am also, once again, very thankful for your service and your sense of humor, which I very much appreciate, and I will miss around here, but also just your knowledge, your ability to facilitate a group, your instructional leadership. I know we've only known each other a year, but I really appreciate all I've learned from you. So thank you for your service, and I hope you'll join me up here to receive your bill. So I can introduce the next group, too. Yeah, I'm excited to introduce our next group. It's our Passages Program Team. I don't know, a couple of our teachers from the program are here. I recently was able to participate in their mock interview process with the students, and I, as, every time I go over to Passages, I thoroughly enjoy myself. But I was, I was very impressed with how well-prepared the students were, how excited they were. And so I thank you for what you're doing for our students, and we're excited to hear from you, so.
We all have a presentation, so I know you have to split.
At the very end, there is a video. Yep, there is a presentation, but.
Okay. Okay, here we go.
So thank you Superintendent Duffrin, and our board members for having us tonight. I apologize. I am literally coming off the track field for the Girls' varsity conference meet right now.
How are we doing?
The girls are doing very well, and I'm hoping to be back there by 8:10, so.
And it's not in Motamidi.
No, it's in Imberg Heights. So we are doing really well. So let's hit this thing. Jenna Venus is also one of our teachers. She is not able to be here tonight. She is in a wedding in South Dakota, so she is on her way there. For those of you who do not know me, I am Jody Tester, one of the teachers. It's my first year at Passages, and this is Ms. Schneider, who I'm going to let take the first few.
So just kind of the highlights of the year is that we really had student-led community meetings every single week. And so they really developed and built all of the different things that we've done throughout the whole year. With the, we had a reverse job fair in the fall that you might have heard about. And that was the big highlight, was that it created, Matt Bjork went to KFAN, and his dream job was to be a radio announcer. And so he got to be on air for over 20 minutes. So it was really fun. And then we started groups with Mr. Troutman. We went to the final four on the light rail, and next week, we are going to Mall of America, learning how to take right light rail. And then one of the really big highlights is the students are really learning about their own disability, and really did huge, huge projects in presentations on their disability. So. Especially with career highlights, we had a reverse job fair. So with a job fair, different employers have booths, and, you know, people walk around. So with the reverse job fair, each of the students had their own, had their own booth, and had a different thing to all talking about themselves. So it was a really great networking event and really bringing in the community. And so last week, we had another event, and we had interviews, mock interviews. And so that was our second, really, community partnership. And so it was a wonderful event, right?
Which, then, yesterday?
Yesterday, we took, or Ms. Venus took the kids to downtown Minneapolis into the IDS Center, and with the Hays, Hays Corporation Insurance, and they had other mock interviews. So it was, last week was more of a entry-level position, and yesterday, we had students come in full suits. And, yep. And so we had over, I would say about 15 tours in different places within our own community this year, and then lots of different, really expanding of what do the kids really want to do for careers, and finding tours and businesses, and really partnering with them.
So one thing that this year, through our PLC at the Passages, we did a co-curricular PLC with the high school department, because what we wanted to figure out is how do we continue to grow? And if you look at the top part, we have the high school that really focuses on electos, the core classes. You have the science, the history, the math. At Passages, we focus on the transitional needs of the students, which equaled, at the time, two separate schools, their own identities. So this year, going up there, as being the first year up there with Ms. Venus being new too, and Ms. Schneider's background, we knew we had to do something to bring them together. So through Q Comp, we asked the high school, please let us join your high school PLC, and we did. So if you see down below, that's where we took, and we took the high school, we took Passages, and now we are teaming. We're, the communication, community building, every student that is coming to Passages next year, we had their transition meeting at Passages. So last year, they had meetings at the high school. 100% of the kids coming next year, meeting was held with their families at Passages. So from 0 to 100%, we're pretty excited. We also were trying to figure out ways for IEP meetings. How do we help? And in your packet you will see, through our PLC, we developed the need of a referral process. Coming from the high school myself, I wasn't 100% sure. How do I have my students go to Passages, the transition. Passages, the transition program? I've also had the opportunity to tour five, six different transition programs. Passages were unique. Our students, we interbat everybody together, we work on individual basis, everybody has their own individual need, but we don't separate out. Our program is all together, and that is very unique, and something to be very proud of. And that's where we want to continue with the high school. We knew we needed a referral process. The high school also needed, wanted a checklist, what kind of things should they be looking for at an earlier age, like 9th grade, to start working on? So, it shouldn't wait until, oh, they're a senior, now what do we do? So, that's where, like I said, in your packet, we have all three referral packets that the high school and Passages work together as a team to develop. And, yeah, it was a lot of work and a lot of time. Next year, we're excited to continue having meetings with the high school, and building it to a 14 to 21 program across the district, so, yes. It's -- hit a magic button again. There we go. Thank you for helping. So, moving forward, what do we need to do? Lots of things. One of the big things we really want to see is to start helping our students develop a graduation portfolio, which will also include on their last IEP meeting, they are doing a presentation. This year, we had our students start running their own IEP meetings. Now, we need to take it to the next level. They need to be able to do a full presentation. If you would have seen these students' disability presentations, unbelievable. We also want them to go down to the high school. This week, we took students down to the high school, visit every resource, every study skills, every social com class, and our students did a presentation about our program, and let their students ask questions. The conversations were unbelievable. I wish I would have brought a video camera for everybody to see. Future plans, what are we doing the next five years? We need to sit down, the three of us, our principal, and everybody, what does it look like? What do we need to continue to support our students in the district? Education, their biggest accomplishment, those are things -- all the bullets are things we want them to put into their portfolio, that they'll be able to answer. So, at graduation, when their portfolio is sitting out, anybody can go up and look at it and say, wow, they've got it together. They know what they're doing. So, we're ready for that. The next part is developing a process template for the students to prepare and run their own IEP meeting. We're in a mix on that. It will all depend on the student's disability area. The template might be a little bit more intense for a certain disability area, where in a different disability area, they may develop their own template. So, they're not copying what Ms. Tester does, because it's easy to copy if I make the template, and it's all about their creativity. We really want to keep moving forward and develop a course offerings book. This is new. In the state, we need to start developing transcripts with transition programs.
That's brand new.
That is brand new. What's nice, I'm coming from the high school, I understand transcripts inside and out. So, we've had some pretty hard conversations. What does that look like? How do we make this happen? How do we grade? Do they get credit? Don't they get credit? Does PSL go on there? Does it not? So, that is things we need to keep going forward with. And then, the big thing we really want to finish before school starts is a brochure and our work postcard. So, when we are out and about, we have something to hand out. When we have our referral meetings, our intake meetings, we have a folder. Here you go, family. This is what we're brought. Please come and join us. That's what we are looking forward to doing. So, moving forward, we also have statements, because tonight was just tough for our students. They've been so busy. So, we did, Ms. Schneider's did awesome thing.
And also, part of it, too, is this program has, this is the third-year program, so we've done so much, but we're just so looking forward to all the great things that we're doing. And here's a video of -- for the students' input.
What Passages means.
Passages is extra opportunity just for me, just for my whole life.
Passages has made me more open to more options as I go on through this program.
Passages is really important to me, because it helps me grow and learn. It's really done a lot for my mental health and schooling.
Passages has helped me transition from high school to college easier, understand how to finance more efficiently for my future, and Passages has helped me grow into the person I am today.
I like getting out in my own community.
So, Ms. Schneider said, we are looking forward to the future. We're looking forward to what great things that we can bring, and we so appreciate all of your support. Graduation's June 5th. We'd love to see you.
At 6 o'clock, right here.
Yes. So, do you have questions for us?
Comment? And a couple really nice. I have been, I've had the privilege of coming to the luncheon, community ed luncheon here, and you've had the Passages students working on serving and clearing up and doing all the help for the luncheon, which serves, I don't know, 60 to 80 people from time to time each month. And I just want to say that these students are amazing. You know, one of the things where when you're waiting on a table, you really don't want, you want to be focused with your conversation, and these students are able to put the plates down and attend to needs, and you can continue the conversations, and really, the best of service that I've seen out there. So, I wanted to make that comment. The other piece that I wanted to share is, in my former life at Festival Foods, I've hired literally thousands of employees, and I would hire any one of these people that I've seen at the luncheons to work at my store if I was still doing that. So, just.
We were bringing that back to share with our job coaches.
Yep.
That means a lot. Thank you.
The last thing I have is, if you develop this card or some type of brochure to highlight the program, the Chamber of Commerce, of which we are members, would be willing to take those flyers, and they have a special spot where they have takeaways for people to come into the Chamber office. There are 400 member businesses as a part, and I think we could, if jobs for the students are something that you're, they're looking for, I think the Chamber could help in that area. So, again, maybe we connect offline here. It's during the summer, we can figure that out. Okay? All right.
So, I'll just add to that. I did connect with Jenna, and we've connected her with the White Bear Chamber and the Workforce Development Group, so.
And we're off this week for the mock interview, right?
Yes.
Oh, good, good. So, I think we're off to a good start. I wanted to see that happen.
How do they run their own IEP meetings, and how do they create their own templates? If you could just quickly, I don't mean to keep you, I know you have to go.
No, no, no. This is a priority. Each, it depends on the disability area. So, I can speak for students with EBD, SLD, OHD. Do I need to say what that means? Or are we, EBD is emotional behavior disorder, SLD is your specific learning disability, OHD is other health. We may not need to be as specific with their template. What you want to do is sit down with your students and have them go over their goals and objectives. Where are you at with this goal and objective? What do you want to work on going forward? It's very easy for us adults to say what they need, but don't we want them to meet the goal? So, we need their input, have them tell us, and then, yes, we have to put it in a language for the state. But otherwise, you keep that information that the students have done. You ask them about their strengths. In our world, you have to talk about weaknesses. I always tell the students, it's not a weakness, it's things that we need to work on, things that we need to improve on. Each and every one of us need to improve on things. If we don't, then we need to take a look in the mirror. So, all of our students, in my world right now, that is what they're doing. Then, you also want to have them, what is your future goal? Where do you want to get? How are you going to get there? That's how you do it. So, in a template, then they put it on however they want. They can develop a beautiful presentation like Ms. Schneider's did, they can do it however they want. It might just be one little page, and say, here you go, Ms. Tester, deal with it. Okay, we're dealing together.
I had a student yesterday that led her own meeting, her end-of-the-year meeting, with her county social worker, and then also with Folk Rehab, vocational rehab services, and her mom. And it was, she did a PowerPoint presentation, and she printed it off, and there was pictures to support it. And so, it was, what does she need? What is she good at? What are, what are, what does she want to do in the future, and what help does she need with that? And so, that led the discussion, and so, she was able to lead her very end-of-the-year meeting. And this is a student who, the majority of her meetings, she never attended, because it was too much. And so, she got to end her schooling on a very, very positive note.
Yep. That was powerful.
During the week.
So, one of the things, one of the things, I'm not, I don't want to interrupt you, but that is what we want to continue to work with from the high school, too, because we have to work, so we understand where they're at, where they're going, and eventually just start walking. Because as soon as a student is on an IEP, they need to know and have a path, and what does that path look like? What needs do they have? How do they get there? And as the educators, we're part of that team. The families, the student are a big piece of it, and we need to make sure we're hearing. But the big thing that we often sometimes forget, we need to listen to the voice of our students. I don't care what their disability is, they have a voice. They might not be able to sit with 20 people around the table, but as a case manager, then I take, and I listen to my student, and I become their voice. And that's what we need to do.
Create a video or something.
Yep.
That's got to be really cool to see.
Yeah. Anytime. The door's open. As you can see, I don't, we are, you get what you get.
Hey, Julie, ask a question.
And I just wanted to say, it's just remarkable in three years how it just continues to evolve. So, I mean, it's really impressive. It's really, it's so fun to hear what you're doing. So, thank you for sharing.
Thank you so much.
They tweet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Next on our agenda is our last report from our current student representative, Luke.
Well, before I start with my report, I really would like to thank all of you here in this room for making this year as awesome as it was. No, truly, I had no clue so much went on in the district. The idea of coming to a meeting every night and like, oh, this is going on? This is awesome! How many more people can I tell about this? It was eye-opening, really, and you can for sure expect me here at every other regular school board meeting from here on out. I do plan to come to the rest of as many school board meetings as I can, because I really do find this terribly interesting. I do, and as much as all my friends make fun of me for it, it's what I really like. And I really would like to thank all of you for this terrific opportunity, so. Moving on, starting with Wildwood, on May 3rd, kindergarten had their spring frolic, celebrating spring, which is still on its way. It's a little bit cold outside right now, but still on its way. Rounding into summer now, so. On the 6th, 2nd grade had their sports day, and on the 7th, 1st grade had their sports day. And on the 14th, kindergarten had their sports day. Moving on to OHA, on the 7th and the 8th, there was a 3rd grade program. On the 9th and the 10th, there was a 4th grade program, and on the 10th, there was the 5th grade trip to the Mall of America to study physics of roller coasters. I got the chance to talk to my little brother, who was in 5th grade. He said it was a blast. And I do also remember going on that trip when I was in 5th grade, and it was a blast. So, it's good that things have stayed that way. And on the 16th and the 17th, there was a 5th grade program, which celebrates United States history. On the 21st, there was a world music ensemble concert, and 4th and 5th grade concerts at St. Andrews, which I did attend, because again, my 5th grade brother is in 5th grade and was in the 5th grade choir. It all then did fantastic. On the 23rd, today, the 5th graders made their trip to the middle school. And tomorrow, the 24th, is Zephyr Spirit Day and Crazy Hair Day. At the middle school on the 13th, there was a 6th grade choir concert and Glee Club concert at the Chicago Fine Arts Center. On the 14th, there was a 7th grade choir concert and the 8th grade choir concert. And on the 15th, the 6th graders had a chance to go on a field trip to the capital of Minnesota. On the 23rd, today, there was a STEM Link field trip, and on the 24th tomorrow, the 8th graders will visit the high school. I myself will be leading part of that orientation, and I'm very excited to see the new high schoolers. Finally, moving on to the high school, on April 30th, Monomina High School had their annual blood drive hosted by National Honor, by the National Honor Society. On May 4th, National Star Wars Day, the high school had its prom. The theme was "In a Galaxy Far, Far Away." And the venue was at historic John P. Ferber Farm, which is a barn, which doesn't sound that fun, but it really was. It was fantastic. And the SLC got to decorate the gym for Grand March, and there was a disco ball that was shaped like the Death Star, so I see that as a win. On May 15th, SLC had its first meeting with the new council, and Presidents Madison Swanson and Sidney Panic were sworn in by last year's Presidents, Emma Shores and Grace Carpenter. On May 20th, the high school had a mass choir concert with its freshman choir, girls choir, and concert choir, the Pops concert. And coming up on May 28th, the high school has a jazz concert. Moving on to sports, spring sports this year have been plagued by extremely variable weather, if you will, with temperatures ranging anywhere from, I've forgotten, 34 to 81 degrees Fahrenheit. Yet, even with the threat of snow earlier this month, the Monomina Zephyrs prevailed, with notably, the boys tennis team and girls lacrosse team winning their sections. I think that's pretty cool. Other sports, such as baseball, boys and girls golf, boys lacrosse and softball, have also been having fantastic seasons. And according to Ms. Tester, the girls track team is doing, quote, "very well." And that's all about for tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So, Luke, you've done your reports much even past students, and I really appreciate it, but I wonder, as you do the reports, because you've been in our district since kindergarten, is that right?
Yes, yes.
So, do all these reports bring back lots of memories? I mean, you're living through your.
So many, so many. No, it's, it's so much fun, going through the websites and talking to different people. Like, I remember doing the tug of war in 5th grade.
Yeah. And the kickball tournament.
Kickball tournament, and when I was in 8th grade coming to the high school. No, it's a blast. It's really fun. Oh, and also, also, guess who's here tonight? It's my replacement, Claire Fritch, and she's going to do a fantastic job.
Welcome, Claire.
Welcome, Claire.
And you can do things your own way. That's okay.
No, please, please don't.
No pressure.
We look forward to hearing from you next year.
We don't normally get temperature reports, and that was unique tonight.
Okay. Okay. All right. On to the approval of amendments. We have the amendments from April 25th.
Need approval?
Thank you. Moved by Judy, seconded by Kevin. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have discussion and information items, starting with the calendar of events for June and July, well, last week of May, and then through July. Any items people would like to call out from the calendar? I'll start, then. I'll call out our community picnic. Our Teachers Association does host a community picnic for everyone on Tuesday, May 28th, from 5 to 7 at the high school. It's a great time, so I hope many people can make that.
Well, what Ms. Tester mentioned earlier, on June 5th, the Passages graduation, I think they like to have an RSVP on that, don't they? I think they like to know if you're coming.
And a calendar invite with RSVP, so if you have an RSVP.
And it's right here.
Yes, it's here.
Throughout the district and center, so.
The RSVP. Well, what is Lynn's secretary?
Oh, Carol Bacon.
Carol Bacon, I think. Doesn't she usually send it?
I think so. Maybe if we could just tell Laura, who's fine on attending, she could share that. Kevin's? I've already RSVP'd. Kevin's, I've already RSVP'd.
I think I RSVP'd too.
Yeah. Julie, anyone else?
Um, I'm trying to be there.
Okay, and Stacy? Wonderful. Thank you.
Solid maybe, depending on grammar duty.
Exactly.
Yeah, me too, solid maybe, depending on father duty.
And we also have our high school graduation on Saturday, June 8th, at 6:00 PM. Um, there is a rehearsal at 10:30 in the morning, because we have changed a few things. So, it is a mandatory rehearsal for board members, because we've made some changes in that program. And then please have on your calendar our July retreat. We, um, broke the tree up differently this year. So we're doing our board meeting first in July at 4 o'clock, and then going into the retreat, um, to help with work schedules and other pieces and to have a smaller amount of time, um, together than in past years.
So, okay, I'm not sure I heard that change, so.
Which change?
So the meeting is at 4:00, and then we're meeting after.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's on our calendar.
July 11.
July 11. So we'll meet here at the DUC for the board meeting at 4:00 to pay the bills, keep things moving. And then, um, other than that, should be a pretty short agenda being summertime. And then from 5:00 till, say 9:00?
I think we said 5:00 till 8:00.
8:00. Um, we're over at Century College for the retreat. And there'll be an agenda coming out on that. Okay? Anything else on the calendar of committee events?
Yeah, I have one thing. The, uh, MAF board meeting, social piece, looks as if it's going to be on June 10th versus the 17th. Trying, still trying to make sure that we have enough members to have a quorum. But that looks like it'll be the 10th of June.
And that's just for MAF board members, correct?
Correct. And, um, ex officios.
All right. All right, moving on then. We have the Modem and I compensation plan, the Q Comp program. Helen Eddinger.
And I'm sorry, it is 5:00 till 9:00. I feel like I should, the school board retreat, I have on my calendar, it's 5:00 till 9:00. Is that right? Or is it 5:00 till 8:00?
I think we put 5:00 as a start time, and then how, however much time you needed, whether you finished at 8:00 or finished at 9:00.
Okay, just in case it matters. Maybe plan till 9:00 and then.
You'll, you'll help us with good feelings by adjourning early.
There you go. Okay, sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure I got that right.
Superintendent Dr. and School Board, uh, thanks for letting me be here tonight. And Luke, it's really fun to see you here. I taught him when he was a third grader, and, um, I'm not surprised that you're in this position and that you take on leadership, so, um, congratulations. It's really good to see you. Um, so I'm here to talk about our Modem and I compensation plan, also known as Q Comp. Um, this is a requirement that, um, MDE says we need to present to you about the findings from the previous year, recommendations for our program, and a summary of the impact of the program on teaching and on learning. By the way, the keyboard is not working, so Patrick is driving for me. So, thank you, I'll just, yeah, thanks. So you move on to the next slide. Thanks. All right, so, um, Q Comp operates on what's called the continuous improvement model. And this, um, graph shows you the cycle that we go through every year. You'll see that we start with the district and site goals. Um, we do that in the fall, and we engage all staff in setting our building, our PLC, and our individual goals. Um, and throughout the year, the staff continue to monitor the progress toward their goals. And we reflect eventually on the effectiveness, um, check on whether we've met those goals, and finally make decisions based on what we find. And then the cycle starts over again, and we hope that we improve over time. That's our goal. So every year, we have to engage in a program review of MCP or Q Comp. And this year, we looked at the four components, which are setting building-wide goals, participating in PLCs, setting PLC goals, and peer coaching. And you have a, a much more detailed report in your packet if you care to read through that. So the way we gather the information is from several sources. Um, we sent out individual surveys to each teaching staff. Uh, about 148 teachers responded to the surveys. And we did a peer coaching survey, just specific to the peer coaching staff. Um, we interviewed a teacher, we interviewed a coach, and finally, we analyzed some of the PLC minutes. And, um, we did two schools, I believe, this year. We did, um, and Stacy was there at, at our, um, review. We had a good representation of staff and, and board members. So we wanted honest feedback. So it was an anonymous survey, but you'll see here that, um, there's a little bit of, um, frustration with setting building-wide goals and how it relates to their own professional development. Um, I think it has to do with teaching content areas. And sometimes those, the building-wide goals, let's say if you have a reading goal and you're a Phi Ed teacher, you might not be as invested in that, in that site goal. The site goal must be a standardized assessment that we use. And so we're a little bit tied in. It's probably the most prescriptive part of our program. Um, but if you look at how valuable building-wide goals is to the building as a whole, the opinions are quite different. I think they do see the value of that. So for professional learning communities, um, we're quite encouraged by these results, that the PLCs are seen as good opportunities to collaborate. You'll see that quote down there by Richard Dufour about what a PLC is supposed to be. And I really do feel like our staff is beginning to understand the purpose of the PLC and how it's about, uh, teacher learning, but mostly about student growth. Um, a high percentage, you see, said very or somewhat valuable, um, in being able to collaborate to achieve better results. I think those are really admirable, very admirable results. So this year, we had some budgetary constraints. I don't know if you're aware, but, um, last year, we became, MCP became a self-sustaining budget. Um, this meant that we, um, did not get any more supplementary funds from the district. Uh, we, um, operate with the levy money that we get through the state and the Q Comp money. So for this next year, um, we had to do a little playing with how that budget was going to work. Um, we are reducing the amount we spend for yearly stipends for our PLC facilitators. We didn't want to reduce stipends for the other teacher jobs that we are able to pay for, so we, we compromised. Um, and this next year, we will have every teacher participating in an academic PLC, but also a topic-based PLC. And I really see this as a positive thing. I, I really am excited that it's giving more opportunities to spread out the leadership among all the staff. We may have cross-collaboration between buildings. Um, I think it will help also in differentiating between what is a PLC and what is a department meeting. Um, that's been hard over time, that, you know, you, it's not the nuts and bolts. That's not a PLC. A PLC is a professional learning community. And, um, you'll find on the next slide that we have some choices. This is a fun process to go through. Um, we generated many topics, um, with the teachers, and we, teachers voted on them. The peer coaches visited with every single PLC, um, got input and feedback from them. And then, according to our budget constraints, we were able to pare it down to what you see here. And I think it's really interesting, look at the number of PLCs. Every single building has something to do with trauma-informed or social-emotional health, including at the middle school, where there's the teacher mental wellness as well. Um, I think there's a lot of stress in teaching, and I think that that would be a really, really wonderful way for them to, um, work together to help not only their own stress, but also the stress of students that we see. So then we need to look at what PLC goals do for teachers. Um, again, I think those are pretty good statistics. Um, we are really trying to make PLCs purposeful, and that is something that we're, we'll continue to work on. Peer coaching, I get to, bruh, yay! Um, so peer coaching really continues to get a lot of support. Um, you'll see the statistics there, what says how valuable is peer coaching to your own professional development? Look at that. I mean, that, it's, it speaks for itself. Move on to the next one. Now, this is what I'm really proud of too. I don't know if you know that, I'm a, I'm a coordinator for the program, but I'm also a halftime peer coach. Um, we have four coaches. And if you look at what the staff who responded to the survey have said about our peer coaching staff, I'm extremely proud of our staff. I'm extremely proud of the integrity that we display, the professionalism, the confidentiality, the way we support teachers, um, the extreme commitment we have to, to our teachers and to their growth and to our students' growth. Um, I really am so, so proud of that. So when you have a chance to really read those and digest those numbers and know that they're all like, you know, in the, I think 95% and up is pretty good. That's like an A. So these are our peer coaches. So it looks like we have four coaches, but really, we have three. We have three FTEs. When we started this program, we had five full-time coaches and a full-time coordinator. We are now, we've now had to cut that to three full-time coaches, and I'm a halftime coordinator as well. So we have Stacy Triplet and Laura Tussie and Donna Forbes and Helen Eddinger over there. Donna is retiring this year, and she's been such a gift to our district. Um, we will miss her greatly. She has a lot of wisdom, a lot of insight, and has really, um, gone the extra mile to help out her teachers that she works with. I'm just going to give you a minute. There's two slides here that, um, help us just tell you how wonderful the program is. And, um, as you see, there aren't any names attached, because the surveys were anonymous. But again, that kind of speaks for itself and how positive this program is. I do see down below that, um, peer coaching is some of the most successful professional development. We do, the reduction in staff has made it more difficult. Our, our coaches are pretty stretched right now with the number of teachers they work with, which, um, affects our ability to do the work that we want to do, the way we want to do it. But with the resources that we have, we're doing the very best we can, and, and we continue to grow as well. So then we had to do our, um, review panel. We had a number of people, uh, look at a, a series of rubrics. So there were about 16 different benchmarks, um, really, all related to what you see there, the teacher later positions, the job embedded professional development, and peer coaching. And in all three areas, we were determined to be proficient or exemplary, so, yay us! It's great. Yeah, that's good, yeah. So, um, some of our challenges, I think I've made that fairly clear, that we're now a self-sustaining budget, which really impacts our ability to do, um, the full kind of program that we think we could do. Um, we've also added early childhood to Q Comp, which results in about an extra $7,000 a year. Um, and the challenge is, of course, having a lack of a full-time peer coach in each building, that we, a couple of the peer coaches share the buildings. So my recommendations, um, in the future would be to find a way to provide additional funding to the program. Um, I think you'll see the data supports the effectiveness of it. And to somehow find a way to have a full-time coach in every building. So we voted, every year, we need to vote on Q Comp and whether to continue. And the membership voted, and there are the results. Um, we had 119 total votes, 118 yes, 1 no. I know who the vote, the no-no vote was, so, yeah. I had to talk with that person. It's fine, you gotta have one, right? So are there any questions or comments? Or, um, I'm willing to answer anything you might have. Yeah, it's fine.
I just want to comment, I, I did attend the meeting, and I was really impressed. And my son also had Helen for a teacher. And, um, I remember even back then thinking how phenomenal you were. And I think, uh, we're really lucky that you are guiding other teachers. I think you do a phenomenal job, and I just want to express that.
I take it very seriously, and I believe it really, really strongly, the program and what it can do for teachers, so, thank you.
Kevin?
Um, in looking at the topic-based PLCs, seeing the, uh, trauma-informed, social-emotional health, um, coming through, uh, is it been your experience that this is a significant issue that needs to be addressed among staff? I mean, I've heard, my wife is a teacher at St. Paul's Schools, I have.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you realize the stress involved in teaching, and knowing how to balance your life with, um, with your job, which is a very intense job. And I think the teachers in this district believe so strongly in being the very, very best teacher that they can be. But with that comes the stress of, of fear of failure, uh, all of those kinds of things that, that come as wanting to be perfect.
So how do we address some of that now? I, I don't mean to go off on too much of a thing, but just, are, do you think we're, are we addressing it? Is it work that we really need to do and see more support?
I think that we will have maybe a better idea after the next year gets going. Um, my sense is that, yes, it's something that we want to, um, deal with and, and help teachers know how to deal with stress and how to know that they are doing a good job and reinforcing the teachers and affirming them that, um, they're, they're really excellent. You, you are extremely lucky in this district with the staff you have. And I've seen so many people in the classrooms teaching, but man, they give it their all. And I don't think that you always, as a teacher, know, when can I back down? When can I, when can I just take a minute and, and work on my own physical and mental health?
I recognize I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
No, that's all right.
Sorry for that, but I wouldn't mind, in the future, uh, next year or so, maybe, begin with that a little bit, because I think, uh, boy, it, there's hardly a night that goes by where you don't hear about mental wellness on a newscast or what have you. And, and so, yeah, I wouldn't mind learning a little more over time.
Well, as you can see, the staff, it's the middle school that's going to do a teacher mental wellness PLC, and it will be really interesting to see how they proceed and what they think are important issues. So we may have more information then as well.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I, I want to jump in too. I, I want to thank you for how, you, you identified yourself as taking this job very seriously. And I have to say how impressed I've been with how seriously you've been taking this job and your commitment to it. So, thank you for all you've been doing to coordinate. And I loved the comments and how I saw, um, that it's teacher-powered coming through. Just the emphasis on reflection as being a really powerful component of, uh, improving teacher practice. And, um, and then just the choice that you have in there too, for, for their, for every teacher's own learning, and that it's a collaborative effort around that. Just so many great comments and so many great components, and so thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for those comments.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Thanks Helen.
All right, next we have the 2019-2020 preliminary budget. Do we have a spreadsheet?
Oh.
So excited.
I want everyone to see it. Favorite spreadsheet of the night.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for an opportunity to present an update on the preliminary budget for next fiscal year. So we're talking about July 1st, 2019, through, uh, June 30th, 2020, already. Including the new board packet, there's some verbiage related to, uh, the agenda item. And so I'm going to start there with the, uh, the cover page. So, uh, as we know, our general fund budget process, we began our 1920 general fund budget process in February. Uh, we started by identifying enrollment targets and budget assumptions for next school year. After we had that, uh, done, in March, the school board was presented with budget options and scenarios for next year. And in April, the board received information on budget adjustments and recommendations for, adjustment recommendations for next year. So that was all in the general fund. Uh, we have not looked at the other governmental funds yet, uh, for next year. And that's really the purpose of tonight, is to look at some of the other governmental funds. And by that, I'm talking about, um, the food service fund, community service fund, our debt service fund, internal service fund, which is our health insurance fund, uh, other post-employment benefits, OPEB for short, trust fund, and then our OPEB debt service fund. And so, uh, on the second and third page and up on the screen, I'll kind of toggle back and forth between the notes to those other governmental funds and the actual information.
Scroll up so people can see what.
Yeah, I'll scroll down here. Yep, so on the, on the spreadsheet, uh, really from, from line 5 to line 17, just from a. illustration standpoint, that's all general fund. And that really has not changed significantly. And by not change significantly, I'm talking about the small surplus projected of about $6,000. So, that hasn't changed significantly since we looked at the general fund last month. And so, we can go back to that at the end here if there are any questions on the general fund in light of the legislative session. But tonight, I'd like to start with the other governmental funds. So, starting first with the food service fund. So, you can see that our food service fund in column C is estimated to have a beginning fund balance, and it's still an estimated beginning fund balance because we haven't finished the eighteen-nineteen fiscal year. And so, that amount is estimated right now. You can see our estimated revenues next year of 1.42 million and estimated expenditures of 1.43 million. So, we're projecting just a slight deficit of about $4,500 in the food service fund for next year. And that does include, in the notes page, you can see breakfast price increases, ten cents at the elementary and adult, light lunch price increases between five and fifteen cents, and then our food service supervisor increase per the 1920 contract with Stillwater Schools, ISD 834. And so, that's included in that as well. Looking down at the community service fund, you can see that in the community service fund, they're projecting a slight surplus of about $43,000. Really, the only change in revenue and expenditures from this year to next year from a preliminary budget standpoint is a decrease in expenditures due to one-time playground and equipment purchases that were made by the community service fund this year that they won't have next year. So, that's really the only, the only main change there. Debt service fund. So, debt service fund for both Fund VII and then our OPEB debt service fund are very similar. So, as you'll recall, our debt service fund, we are required to levy one hundred and five percent to principal and interest payments on our voter-approved debt service. And so, that's the revenue that you see in the debt service fund. And then our expenditures in the debt service fund relate to three bonds. So, we have, our big payment is on the 2014 A general obligation refunding bond. That's the bond that built the new Wildwood School as well as other things. So, that's a payment coming out there. Our 2014 B general obligation refunding bond, and then our 2016 A general obligation tax abatement bond. So, those are really the three payments coming out of the debt service fund. And with that one hundred and five percent required levy on the revenue side, we're showing a slight surplus of $78,000 in the debt service fund. Our internal service fund, again, that's our health insurance fund. We're projecting just a slight surplus of $17,000 there for next year. And then our OPEB trust fund. So, you can see our OPEB trust fund actually shows a deficit of $185,000, and that is reasonable and expected for that trust fund. It's always that way. Actually, the balance in the trusts there, the 1.1 million, the only revenue that's coming in is an estimate for interest revenue in the OPEB trust fund. And then the $220,000 in expenditures is an estimate on OPEB liability payments for the 1920 fiscal year. And so, that trust fund is set up. We're putting a little amount of interest revenue in it, and they're just paying it down based on our OPEB obligations in any given year. And then finally, our debt service, OPEB debt service fund, very similar to the regular debt service fund. Our payment there is just on the OPEB principal and interest on the OPEB debt. So, you can see on our non-major funds or other governmental funds, really not a huge change right now, just a small deficit in the food service fund. Otherwise, every other fund is balanced, with the exception of the OPEB trust fund, which is expected to be in a deficit position. Any questions on the other governmental funds at all? From here, we will package this all up. And the spreadsheet that you see in June, and you will see a spreadsheet in June, will be a much better-looking spreadsheet as part of the preliminary budget, all funds. And we'll review everything from enrollment to community data to our preliminary budget for next year. So, we'll take all this, package it up over the next month, and you'll see it for a formal recommendation for approval on June 27.
Okay. Questions? Very nice spreadsheet. Thank you so much. Next, we have action items, starting with the approval of policies. This is the third reading of these policies.
And I have no additional comments unless anyone has any questions. I haven't heard any as of late, so I'm just recommending that we approve.
Maybe it'd be good to do one motion to encompass them all to save us some time. So, if someone likes to have a motion.
I have approval of all these policies.
Thank you.
I second.
Moved by Judy, seconded by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving all the policies under 10A, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have the approval of a resolution to place an unrequested leave of absence.
And these were two staff members that I, these two resolutions I brought forward at our last meeting. And these are reductions of .5 FTE for both due to enrollment student need. So, that is, that is why those are both being recommended for approval this evening. And so, I think we have to do two separate approval, or two separate resolutions.
Correct.
Okay. And so, the first one is a resolution relating to the non-renewal of the contract of Julie Edwards. Sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Sorry, that's the non-renewal. I'm on the wrong one. Here it is. There we go. The resolution placed Julie Edwards on an unrequested leave of absence. And so, the resolution is there in your packet in its entirety.
Move approval. Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Judy, seconded by Mike. Any discussion on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, Holly Packard.
Okay. And again, it's a resolution to place Holly Packard on an unrequested leave of absence for .5 FTE. And the whole resolution is in your packet.
Move approval.
Thank you. Second. Moved by Kevin, seconded by Judy. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Yes.
I'm not discussing, just, is this something that we're going to be having moving forward as opposed to stuff that is at the end of the agenda that we don't usually go through?
So, the question is, why did we do these specifically compared to the other consent agenda?
Yeah.
So, an unrequested leave of absence is different than, yeah, okay.
That's good for me, thanks.
That's good enough, okay. Okay. And there are details in that resolution for you to review if you'd like.
Okay. Next, we have committee reports, starting with AMSD.
Okay. And so, for AMSD, I think the highlight of that one was the update from Paula Forbes and Mel Matthews on the Cruz-Guzban case. It is, it's in, I think it's in mediation. The focus is on settling the case. And the mediator is, did request AMSD districts to give some information regarding the work of Education Reimagine to help understand, give them some perspective. So, the work of the AMSD districts did not go unnoticed and was requested in that case. So, I think that was the, that was the main highlight. Of course, every, every time we get together at AMSD, we're talking about the legislative session, and so, that will happen again on Friday. We do have AMSD, an AMSD meeting tomorrow, which is not our regularly scheduled time necessarily, but it is to review what's happened most recently, so.
It's a special session tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
So, they probably won't know exactly what's happening, but they can take a pretty good guess that the education bill will get passed.
Well, and Tom Melcher will be there to talk about all that, and so, I will be writing quickly, as fast as I can to catch it all, because he goes, he moves quick. So, that would be it. Thanks.
Maeve?
I have something to add on the AMSD side. Sorry, Julie. So, I went, I don't know, three weeks ago to the executive. And so, there was much discussion about, well, the budget came up, and it seemed, you know, one of the concerns was, is AMSD paying market rate for staff? So, that kind of got brought up by some of the superintendents. The other, Reimagine Minnesota was a big topic of conversation. We had David Law from Anoka Hennepin there. We had Christine from North St. Paul, Mapud Oakdale. And those two have been going out to districts other than metropolitan districts. They've been going out and talking to different ones in greater Minnesota. So, that was kind of interesting to hear their take on that. I kind of wondered myself whether there was a specific reason for this to start, and is it, I mean, I applaud that they want to look at it outstate or greater Minnesota. But then there was the discussion that the Minneapolis Foundation is willing, has made an overture to fund Reimagine Minnesota in its entirety. The topic came up, that does the AMSD lose control over the mission of that? So, that was, and I don't know if they've said anything subsequent to that, but I thought quite interesting that Mayor Ryback is the head of the Minneapolis Foundation, and so, it's interesting that he came forward on that. I think it's something that other foundations in Minnesota could embrace as well, because all the districts have that need. So, that was my report from your meeting. Mike?
Thank you.
Maeve Ford, but just met on Monday, and it was actually kind of a sad meeting, I have to say, because six people went off the board. So, Dale Johnson went off, Judd went off, Mike Conley, Christie Skillings, Jay Brettinger, and Brian Roloff. And so, if you see any of them, make sure to thank them for all of the many years of service, because most of them have been big time givers to that organization. Again, Suzanne announced today, $48,500 in scholarships for our graduating seniors. It's a pretty, pretty impressive amount. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it, other than, you know, another huge thanks to Abby Moffett and Maria Roller for, and Kevin, and all the people in the office for such great gala. And the check, the big check. So.
For MSBA, you received an email from Laura. Barb and I discussed the summer seminar and decided this year would be a good idea to not do summer seminar, but instead to do the personalized learning conference held in eastern Carver County schools, greatly supported by the Bush Foundation. So, we will be attending that. And I know some of you are RSVP'd to Laura, and we've been registered for that conference. And so, we're approaching our professional development this summer a little bit differently, because this is usually, I mean, I'd say, register for summer seminar, so I'm not going to say that this time. We're going to do something different this year for our professional development. So, that's about it for MSBA. 916.
Two things to report out. They have been having a very difficult time hiring a director of finance. Bill, close your ears. But it's been really a challenge, and part of the issue is it's supply and demand. There just aren't that many good business managers out there. And the second piece is the finance of 916 is unique. And so, the people that may be a finance manager at North St. Paul will have a skillset to run a traditional district, but this intermediate district, 916, is a unique animal. And so, it's been hard to find, and they use some very unique software, too, and I don't know if, anyway, it doesn't really matter. But the long and the short of it is, they're having a hard time finding somebody. They had somebody, and it just didn't work out. Now, they're going to hire Todd Nitske, who has his own, he's kind of, we've had him. And he comes in, he's going to come in two days a week, Thursday and Fridays, onsite to work with 916. And they've had some good hires in the supporting finance area, so we feel this will be a good, I don't know, stopgap, that's not maybe the right, but a good way to continue what needs to be done on finance until a person comes along that will have the ability to pick this up and go. It worked for us, and I have no reason why it wouldn't work for 916. The other piece is the 916, oops, 916 golf tournament. I've already talked about this. Any golfers here? Stacy, I know you won. Anyway, so, it's out there. It's at Indian Hills on June 11th. Shotgun start, starts at noon. You get a green fees golf cart, unlimited range, shooting of range balls before, lunch buffet, dinner buffet, and all sorts of other added things. So, if you do like to golf and want to, would do, it's a fundraiser for the 916 Foundation, and it raises a nice amount of money for the foundation, so.
They'll take people who don't golf, too.
I would run the golf cart, but they may be a little suspect of me currently, so. There's my report.
Thank you. Any other board member reports from committees or events you've been to?
Well, I wanted to call out one other thing, but I'm going to wait till Kathy Wyland's here.
Oh, yeah. Well, I was just going to say, doesn't it feel different with Kathy not being here tonight? But I, I'll just briefly share about the last community education meeting. There won't be any meetings through the summer, so that was the final one for the school year. They have a number of great activities. They had their final lunch on May 1st, which I think was also a success. And I just want to encourage everyone to look at the activities throughout the summer, and then there will be another brochure coming out that will list all the fall/winter activities. So, they just offer such great programming, and just wanted to share that. And there's nothing, not too much other new news since they're going into a break.
All right. Next agenda item is superintendent's report. Barb?
Okay. So, we've hit a few of these already, but I will just reiterate what an amazing night the scholarship night was. I hadn't, but this is my year first, so of course, that was something I hadn't been to before. And just the generosity of our community and the support of our students is quite amazing. I've been attending, this is a great time for me, because I get to attend all these year-end celebrations, and I know it's very stressful for the teachers and students right now, but I'm having a great time, because I got to go to preschool graduation, a couple of those today, so that's fun. I know the kindergarten program's coming up. I've been invited to come to a few of the presentations of learning that various students are doing at different levels, including some at the high school and the middle school. So, it's, so, it's been fun for me. I've been out in the classrooms, getting to see what the students are, their culminating activities, so I've enjoyed that. We will be talking about this more, but I just can't help myself to talk about our action team leaders and the work that they've been doing. So, I know when we get to the point where we're talking about the strategic plan, we'll want to recognize everyone again, but we are wrapping up our action team process, and our action team leaders have taken this job so seriously and have put so much time into making this process a good one for our, and all, we had, again, seventy community members join those teams, and our action team leaders have really done a phenomenal job, really leading those practice, those groups. And so, I'm really thankful for that, and I know we're going to see some pretty amazing work come forward when we have the planning team meeting on June 11th. And thanks again to Alice and Patrick, who have been, we've started, I think Kathy Wyland dubbed them our handlers, because they've been doing so much work to get everyone ready. And so, and there's Nicole in the back. She's one of our action team leaders, who's been working very hard to put all this together. So, I think at that, I will, I will stop, but I'm having a great, but I will say, I'm having a great time, and you're welcome to join me at any of these year-end celebrations, so just let me know, because there's something all the time.
All right. That's it for the formal agenda. Have a motion to adjourn, please. Thank you.
Second?
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.